I'm going to introduce Karen Hawkins. We have been speaking about this project for some time. Karen and I have spent, and I want to say thank you to Karen because she has been saying so much. This has been a labor of love, I know, on Karen's part. I'm glad her introduction has enlightened me today. We have so much, so many good people on that committee that have just come together to be part of the Shepherd this program. How this project belongs. So, for it to get started, I would like to begin with Karen. She's going to introduce her committee and visit a little bit of the other side of the timeline.
Thank you. Good morning. Okay, how amazing is this that we're here at worship service with Pastor Paul Olmert? Was that amazing? Tell me your round of applause. That's incredible. And it's just one more indication of the way that this church is growing and thriving. We are in an amazing position. We have so much more to be done too. So, as Pastor Chris said, thank you all so much for being here. Of course, let's also give a round of applause to the most amazing pastors we could ever get. And it's my pleasure to introduce people. Amazing in life, remodel committee. See, I can't, I can't tell you how thrilled I was when I got home at the chance to go out and say yes. Because we are talking about some of the most talented, incredible people that bring such wisdom to our community. So, I wanted to start with Matthew Stan as next speaker. So, let's begin with our building committee. Building committee is chaired by Jim Holstead. Also on Jim's committee is John Anderson, who is not a member today. Dennis Boyl, deputy committee president. Dennis Hoss. Tim Yoder. And Kyle Wolf. Also proudly seats some of these beautiful pamphlets that have been done for us explaining what our project looks like, the scope of this project, all thanks to incredible Rick Miller, who is chairing our marketing team. And our steering committee chairman Laura Ullrich.
There she is.
On Laura's committee are Sabrina and John Beck.
Thank you. I'm sure we're great.
And the answer to Ryan, Mr. Phil, are also mine. Amy and Kim Hawkins Jr. Amy and Kim. Margery and Joe McGill. Chris Marmus. I know they were here at the beginning. And then doing double duty, Rick and Pam Miller. What incredible leaders. So, thank you all so, so much for your hands and everybody. I also want to thank everyone who hosted a small group gathering. And so, we started these small group gatherings with the intention of going through all of the design concepts. We presented every design. We talked about the scope of the project. And it was made possible by the generous people who hosted all the smaller gatherings for us. So, we started on January 26th with Sarah Circle, Janice Hoss, and Margery McGill helping us. Then that evening, we hosted another small group gathering, but then in a black hosting. On January 30th, Deb and Todd Washburn hosted a small group gathering. On the 2nd, Margery and Joe McGill. On the 5th, Pam and Rick Miller. On the 15th, Margie and Steve Ross. On the 26th, we went on the road to the Arboretum with Ann Carter and Rick Miller hosting us. On the 9th, we went out on the road to Pacific Springs, thanks to Pastor Sarah and Donna Walter. And then the evening of the 9th, Kim, Amy, and Mike Smith and I hosted that final month. We do have one more in the works for the youth, so that is our comment. But round of applause, please, for all of our members. We wanted to make sure we can get the word out to everyone. We wanted to try our very best to make sure that everyone can see all the design concepts, hear everything, and it was made possible by this conference. So, thank you all. Right, and also, this was sent to you. This was emailed to you, but I'm just wondering what it gets, just to help this back in your mind. We need more of the Star, different church, in Blackwood, Ohio, timeline. Initially, Paul Carter called me and I, through our committee, because our fabulous Rick Miller, our bargaining ship, we're really happy with it. So, that is what we're calling it. But I want to remember this all really begins in 2014. We began a discussion of a congregation forming in three years for strategic plan with goals that were in the name of Morning Star's mission. Assembles strategic plan committee with Kyle Wolf serving as chair, the committee begins meeting and planning. In 2015, the strategic planning committee meets with community leaders and small group gatherings take place. In 2016, a large group gathering takes place to determine a consensus for our goal. In 2017, the council meets in September, holds a prayerical retreat to determine four strategic growth areas of strategic plan for Morning Star Living Church. In 2018, Morning Star holds its annual meeting where the strategic plan is presented and unanimously approved. In 2019, Morning Star begins addressing strategic goals, including hiring new youth director, which we did. It's right here. You're true. And then comes 2020. So, more fun, Morning Star very successfully dealt with the COVID vote in the pandemic. In '21, current and last eight years, the council presidents met and agreed to proceed with the remodel project in answer to the strategic plan goal, particularly addressing the two goals addressed in the fourth growth area. Through it, Morning Star hires Kevin Straley, the CEO of Architects, and Mark Moore. Mark, did you stand? Our interior designer, we assemble the remodel committee, we go forward, meeting with staff to determine initial design concepts. In 2022, Morning Star arranges numerous meetings with architect, designer, and staff, holds no member special congregational meeting with architect and designer present to present preliminary design concept. If you remember, that was just last November upstairs in Satuary. The remodel committee has formed and begins meeting. In '23, this is where we are now, ten small group gathering meetings are held January through March, and I'm not sure when the year is named, but it may go into April, with presentations of initial design concepts, fundraising for large lead gifts are successfully being conducted. And then today, large group gathering meeting and lunch in hell on Sunday, March 12th, in the fellowship hall, follow worship in order, and this is what we're going to do today, determine consensus on the design concept and the scope of the project. Next will be a special congregational meeting on April 30th to vote if the congregation wishes to move forward with the project and determine whether to move forward, the building committee will work with the architect to put the job out for them. Once the contractor is determined, the contractor will determine published timeline from start of project to completion. So, that is your timeline. As an aside, as we were preparing the strategic goals, I was president of the council at that point, and I started this at every small group gathering, but for those who were unable to attend, we were faced with a number of issues with deferred maintenance at that time. Including this roof that the insurance company just didn't quite believe us and the hail actually had to straighten. But we got a cell, we got a ready roof, and then came in a hail service. So, we don't have a second, new roof for us to use. Also, that while this was going on and we were talking about strategic goals, your council pulled together a wish list, and you all have seen it, it's on one of the manuals. I had been working with Mark Moore at that time on a different project, and I said, "Mark, would you come over to church, finish the program, and see what you think?" And I'd like to meet Pastor Chris. And so, we began then, and that's how this all started coming about. So, I was, as I'm sure you all know, this is how this started with all how it started, strategic plan, the strategic goals, and hopefully we're able to reach these. I'm very excited for today, and I think we could be in there twice. So, I can't thank you all enough. Thank you.
Okay, now that's us. We're going to start talking about the plan, but before we do that, why are we doing this? I mean, then, why are we doing this? I think, I think we all have kind of an idea in our mind, and why does our church building matter to us? At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Mark Hayden forward. Pastor Mark, I didn't do a really good job of introducing the formal worship, but Pastor Mark was my internship supervisor in Cedar Falls, Iowa, at Bethlehem Lutheran Church. It was a wonderful year of internship and learning for me. And it's also where all of his internship, two years prior to that. I had the fortune of having been able to serve my first call with Pastor Mark. He took a meatball in St. Mark Lutheran Church in Rockford, Illinois. The interesting thing about Rockford at the time was, I believe, there were 22 ELCA congregations in a very small run. You might hear it, so there was like a saturation of Swedes and, and, there's a lot of Swedes in that's another. There were Swedish pancake monthly events, and that was very tiny. But St. Mark had another project after I left to go on my second call down in Sonoma, Kansas, at Redeemer. Pastor Mark led that congregation through a remodel process as well. And because of Paul being here today, I got a wonderful opportunity to bring a great friend and mentor to Omaha. So, I wanted to thank him for Mark and his wife Karen for being here today. They drove through a snowstorm in Des Moines yesterday to be here, so. So, it was a little tricky, I think that's a one thing, but I'd like to welcome Pastor Mark Hayden forward and ask you to share your word with us for this.
Good morning. I've been retired three years, so I haven't looked at the closets behind this shirt. I'm not quite sure if we're receiving everything, but I've been a full-time pastor for 37 years and been retired, like I said, about three years now. And Karen and I live in the little community of Oregon, Illinois, south of Rockford, maybe about a half hour or so. But it's great to be here today. Yesterday, coming out here, as Chris said, the snow got wild. After four cars and a semi, the ditch, all of the dishes, we just kept, you know, going forward, taking our time, and then finally it cleared up and started raining, we came here, but anyway, nothing about the weather. It's really great to be here, and it's a joy to be with Chris and Paul again. So, I just want to share some things about my experience. I have been doing fundraising and church remodels for about, I'd say 50% of my ministry over those 37 years. I've done major projects, interrogations in the states of Washington and Minnesota and Illinois. Every time I did that, I learned a little bit more. I watched and listened to the people who do this professionally in terms of raising money and funds and so on, and also people who do the building, the contractors, and everyone involved. Little story though, I'm here to tell you why it's so important that you're doing what you're doing. And you know as well as I do all the statistics about church decline and people not coming back and all this. So, I don't need to talk to you about the challenges that we face. But let me take off my experience. I've been in congregations that really so good care of their buildings, and they understood the value of the buildings and what the visitor or someone new to the community is looking for. And every aspect of the church building is there for a reason, and it's important. But sometimes, because of circumstances, things get away from congregations. Maybe there's conflict in congregation, maybe they're down on leadership or funding or whatever it is. And before you know it, years and decades go by where things are not addressed. And one of the things I learned in my last congregation at St. Mark, when I arrived there, was I hadn't really decided the potential was to the congregation to move forward. I interviewed there back in 2005. I was leaving Cedar Falls, and when I went to this large congregation, I was utterly shocked at the condition of the buildings. Loose carpet everywhere, this is original carpet. Bathrooms were in disarray. It was dark paint, everything was dark and gloomy. And I walked through the building, and I walked around the property, and I thought to myself, "This won't fly." They, they don't understand why they're here, and that your building says so much about your ministry and your interest in being a part of the community. But something about that congregation really, really gave me a sense of both challenge and call. And I was very excited to receive the call after we had some more conversation. But it was clear to me, it was clear to them, that in my call, it was going to be a transformational call. We were not actually doing things the way we were always doing them, but there were things that seriously needed to be done. And I shared this with them during the call process. I said, "Do you realize that these things are turning people away from your congregation? They walk in here, they see things disorganized, not up to snuff, and it's not enough anymore because there are so many churches all around us that have kept up with things. They have great programs, great outreach, and it's so easy to go to another congregation that demonstrates their passion for ministry by the way in which they provide through their building, through the facilities, through the staff, all of that." I ended up taking the call, and the campaign that I want to just touch on briefly was in 2016. But I was there 15 years, and it was 15 years of capital improvement. It's just everything had to happen, and we had to start right away. So, we were, we were really far behind, but we got there. In 2016, we decided to have a major campaign. It's much smaller than what you have, but there were too many things that we wanted to do. Our preschool had closed, it had been open for 41 years, but it dwindled and dwindled because other preschools were opening up that were free, that went longer than a day. So, we decided to pack that in. So, we have all this preschool space available on the upper level of the church. And that sat idle for three years as we were trying to determine how to use that space, how to be an outreach to the community. And we finally came to a place, a conversation about it, and we decided that this whole east wing would be used for two things, for a hospitality center, which we call the St. Mark Cafe. And we made a stay in the yard, and it had everything you could want. And if you go to a coffee shop around town here, we have all the coffee and goodies and media access, everything you could ask for, but we wanted it to be a place where the community can come and dwell, as well as our, our own people. And that space, hospitality, plus a new conference room, which was on the other side of that area, became two pivotal areas that when you walked into the church, it was very clear that we wanted our community to take advantage of the space, to be there with us, as well as are using it, of course, through the weeknights, weekdays, on Sundays, and so forth. We also saw it was an opportunity on Sunday mornings to have coffee and refreshments and beverages, not only in this new space, but also continue it in our great fellowship hall. And so, we hired a woman to come and be responsible for serving food and beverages running between both locations. Too many churches do not have space where people can gather right after worship to talk and eat one another. It's great to be in worship together, but you need that time and you need that available space after worship so you can get to know people and invite them to come. That gathering space right outside of worship is really key. And so, we had two available spaces now for that. And we had space where we could have people gather, it was down the hall quite ways from our worship center so that they weren't interfering with anything going on in worship. So, we have this one for conference or cafe. And then the other key thing was our worship space. And I know you're looking at all these things here as well. The, the worship space we had was designed by someone who didn't understand acoustics and did not understand lighting, because they were both absolutely horrible. We couldn't hear each other, we couldn't see each other. And it was, it was just miserable, really. It was just these faint lights all over the place. And then they shoved in so many wooden pews, you just, you hardly have really get around the place. So, two things we wanted to tackle, lighting, and we wanted to have good seating as well. I could go on and on about the contrast between chairs versus pews. But the big thing that was hard for people to come across with, and I understand, I really do, it's hard to let go of something, and this is the church you've grown up in. You've sat in these pews, they're just a big part of your, of your life together. But then when you introduce something new and introduce it has something that's going to benefit them and others as well, it just takes time for that change to, to purplish and, and take hold throughout the congregation. We made so many changes during those 15 years, and there were always people that were hesitant and, you know, wanted to poo-foo the change. And so, oftentimes, once those things are replaced, they were the most excited about it. There's a woman named Liz, I'm just going to give you her first name. She's just a wonderful woman, she's now in her early 90s, a very outspoken woman about everything. And whatever she was thinking, everybody knew. It just kind of went on around church like that. And I loved Liz because she was a big promoter of St. Mark. She loved everything we were doing, but not changing pews. She was dead set against us getting rid of pews and going to chairs. And so, in the weeks leading up to the campaign and getting these chairs in, she was, she would be up the hall, you know, again, poo-fooing the whole things of her peers. And we had a period of about, about four weeks where we took the pews out, and we were doing the lighting in between, all the new lighting before we could get the chairs in. And so, we held worship in our fellowship hall, which is much smaller. And it's really fun to watch Lutherans have to find a new place to sit. And they would come in there and they'd look around like, "Where's like you? Where are my things?" And for four weeks, we had people laughing and rejoicing and getting to know new folks. And, you know, they weren't sure about it in the beginning, but after four works, four weeks of that, they kind of said, "Can we keep doing this? This is really, really fun, meeting new people." So, we finally got to the part where all the lighting was in, all the, all the benefits of that, and the chairs finally came, and this was a big Sunday. And I was sure what Liz was going to say this time, because she was kind of my lightning rod. And she comes out of church, runs toward me, gives me this hug, and I go, "Uh-oh." And she says, "Pastor Mark, I have to apologize to you. I have to apologize for everything I've been saying. These chairs, the way they look, the way they feel, these are going to be wonderful for the life of this congregation. I absolutely love them." And then she said the words that every pastor wants to hear, "Can I write you a check?" And I said, "Yes." Who spelled my name, F.A. But Liz was great, and she turned to Mark. We saw this kind of thing at St. Mark, through all those years I was there. We try to listen very carefully to people's concerns because they're authentic, they're important, they're real. What was important is that we listened to each other, and we listened to their, their great memories of the past. But we also have conversations about why we are here and to whom we are called to serve. The church keeps moving forward, and the opportunity you have as a congregation is very similar to all those, those things that I had previously as being a part of. This is a critical turning point for you, and it was for us. And it looks like so much work, so much effort, so much cost, and it is. But when this is done, you will be amazed at what God has done for you and through you, and through other congregations like this too, that listen to the whispers of the Holy Spirit, the share, the joys and the concerns of the congregation. But trust that you are all here together to do one thing, that is serve Christ, serve Jesus, and make this a place that people want to be. They want to come here, they want to learn and talk and grow. This is that kind of place, and I applaud you for doing everything you can to make that possible in the best way now and in your future. And thank you for the privilege of being here.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I brought it back my voice. At this time, I think that, copying Jim Holstead yesterday briefly, I think largely what is important here, and Pastor Mark said this, alluded to this, that it's really important that we listen to each other and have an opportunity to share. And that's really the gift that we bring to each other this day as we gather. We have an opportunity to listen to each other. We've had a series of small group meetings that have gone really, really well. What a gift ghosts have been as we gather together, you know, out of this pandemic and share together. But it's also been a time of people asking really good questions about why we're doing this and really thoughtful, productive, constructive feedback. And so, we're going to talk a little bit briefly about that, and I'd like to invite Jim forward. Jim has been doing a lot of work with our architect, Kevin Straley. And I know that they, part of this project includes about 1.2 million in deferred maintenance items. And one of the questions that we've had as a committee is, "Which ones are the ones, and which ones are the ones we really need to tackle now?" And so, Jim, I think, has a really good handle on that, and I'd like to invite him forward to share a little bit with us about this.
I don't know if I have that, where did I handle that? That's a troj. Okay. The building committee that Karen had introduced, that we go, they have some really good folks here that are looking at the details of all of the improvements that are proposed for this project. We received a facility assessment that was prepared last fall, and identified a number of things that were deficient in the church, and listened to some of the things that people were asking for down here at the church to make better. The last improvements I believe that were made here were in 2,000, is that correct, approximately? I think that's what we did, mostly improvements. Prior to that, the chapel was done in 1996, and I think the church was first constructed in about 1969, somewhere in there, in that range. So, a lot of the, a lot of the infrastructure that the church relies on behind this wall consists of a lot of heating and air conditioning, a lot of electrical, a lot of lighting, that is old and is against the big roof. And so, we have taken the assessment that was put together and looked at some of those things in detail. The, the technical subcommittee is going to be meeting with the architect and with the electrical mechanical people tomorrow. Just to kind of go through and ask the rest of them about all the details that have been presented to see if they're real or all necessary. If not, if some of our, some of those items could be deferred through a little longer period of time. The reasons for that is because it costs a lot of money. And the estimate came back for the improvements of the electrical mechanical, not one point ago. Can that be phased into different parts, passed landing? We're going to look at that and see exactly what can be done. The, once the facility assessment was made, it was handed off to Hawkins Construction, who graciously came back with the estimate cost, of what it would take to do all these improvements. And I think the total estimate was about 4.2 million. Now, that did not include any architectural work at all. So, if you add all this together, we could probably be approaching $5 million if we did absolutely everything. Though it's not bad that that facility assessment last year. Now, it's the job of our technical subcommittee to really toll it on all that to see, okay, can some of that be consolidated? Does it all have to be done? If you do certain things, what kind of code enforcements are going to have to be on top of those costs? Because it's all cause and effect. Because it's all cause and effect. If you start doing one thing, you suddenly have to comply with a code that maybe wasn't in existence 10 years ago, but it is today. And then those things possibly, if you start adding all that up. But I'm really feeling good and I'm blessed that the subcommittee that we have is one of the people that are really going to be holding in all of this, making sure that everything we do is feasible, is financially worthwhile to do it, and we wisely spend the money that needs to be spared to keep the church going for another 15 years. So, the last role, we can do that. Again, tomorrow, the subcommittee meeting at 3 o'clock with the architect and also with the discipline of the electrical mechanical. And then of course, 4:30 for record committee meeting. So we can talk about all that. So, there's a lot here. All I can do is assure you that this committee is going to do the best it can to make sure that we're as efficient as possible, should you give us the decision to move on with the project.
Jim, you're fantastic. Thank you so much for your own time you've been taking. I called you about a few months ago and I knew that you had all of the expertise to really lead us through this. So I'm so grateful. You're all grateful that you're helping to do this. So thank you very much. Okay, are you ready to come back up? Karen? All right. I want to say thank you, it's a small group format. We have several note takers and you know who you are, thank you. Marguerite combined all of those notes together. And we took some of those notes and presented them. Karen retyped them into this format here today. We passed this out. We're going to go through, these are some of the observations, comments, feedback, constructive feedback that we've had as we present the plan. And I'm going to give the mic to Karen and then I got another mic here. Turn off share.
So, so what you have in front of you, you also should have received as an email last week. And again, thank you to Marguerite. She took all of the notes from all the Smaller Gatherings and put them all down for us. And Pastor said I retyped it, but actually Susie made it up beautiful, so thank you, Susie. You didn't want to see my version, Susie's looks great. These are notes from the Smaller Gathering, but I'm thinking you probably have other questions since then. And maybe our here to address those. Do you want more?
I hope so.
Do you want more? Okay. All right. All right. We're so blessed to have Mark Warren as our designer. He's done a number of amazing jobs in our community and actually around the country. But I've played groups, Lutheran Church, and a number of buildings, the zoo, and aquarium. And what else does he do?
Uh, grill. Grill it, yeah.
Grill it, Sam. And you want to see?
Yes. Go up the center. If you drop down, Lavenworth, and you see kind of that funny looking stainless steel building on the corner of 42nd and Lavenworth, that came from this guy right here.
And then, okay, so, not only commercial, but also residential homes that range from 1,200 square feet to 30,000 square feet. So, should we, do you want us to do any presentation reports or how do you want us?
Let's go through, just go through the priorities.
All right. Why don't we start with the stationery?
Start with the sanctuary, right? I'll bring it over to you.
Let me ask, how many of you were not able to attend this Smaller Gathering? Who has not seen the presentation? Most of you have seen the presentation, I think that's correct. And I'm going to go through the entire presentation again because I'm assuming most of you have seen it. But just briefly, you'll see, instead of red, wood on the wood, this will all be lit. The cross, it's our cross, we keep our cross, we keep the same basic footprint. It's not a giant change, but it's a necessary change. That red, whatever that material is, is covered. Covered in sweat, it is just... So now it's going to be wood, it's going to be lit from all around it, and the cross will absolutely glow. And between this panel of that, what you see here around all of the stainless windows is the same stone that we have outside. Mark was able to find a resource that matches an example.
Yeah, down, so...
And now this one of the questions about weight, will you address that?
Uh, yes, so what we're, what we're supposed to do is use stone in here. So it's less thickness and less in weight. Well, and we didn't need it to kind of smash the windows, no.
I think that was one of the first questions, one of the first concerns about the weights. Does that answer that? Okay, all right. Um, you also see the chancel area now, and now it's part of it, it's because wood. We lowered it, but in this render, this render has since been changed and we're bringing the altar up. So now, the new design, the altar is only one eighth of the original, as short of that currently is. That was one of the first concerns about it. You know, I'm sure you thought that was a very valid concern, so Marguerite, let's read it on there. Um, the piano is on the main level, Simone and Jacobi spent quite a time with Mark. And Simone and Lavenworth here, we might have some discussion on the client, so we'll go on. Also of interest, the eternal flame. That's our current baptismal font. That font, that bowl is very important to all of us, the men and the women. So many children and grandchildren have been baptized in that bowl, and we're not pointing at that. So instead, Pastor Chris and Mark worked together and they're going to design that as our eternal flame, which I think is wonderful, yeah. Um, the other thing of interest is in on the south sacristy. Right now, we enter from up here, we're moving the door to the floor level. There's two steps that go down to it, it's falling hazard. We want to make it safe level, and that will now become the storage for another music, music stands, monitors, bells, anything. We'll then be able to go in there, bells can be on carts, we're going to take those. Now that's out of there, the bells go on carts, they roll in and roll out. Should be safe and very functional.
Yes, you are.
Would you explain how the acoustical wood?
So you'll notice to the left and to the right of the chancel, you will see a different wood material that is on the surfaces adjacent to the monitors. That's going to be acoustical wood material. And to make it simple to understand, is that it's actually a perforated wood and we've actually concealed speakers and miscellaneous AV equipment behind it so that it gives us a good clean look and also helps our acoustical issues in the sanctuary.
And it looks just like hardwood, it's a really cool product.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
And you can hear Rick ask, is that the same wood around the cross? Yes, it is. There's a ramp now going up instead of steps. You know, if you remember our strategic goals, one of those was really important, trying to make our church more handicap accessible. So now we have a ramp.
Correct. And just a minor little thing, our side corridors are 29 and a half inches wide. And that needs to be increased to a minimal of 36 inches. So, to accommodate wheelchairs and walkers and, you know, it's going to be easier for people to get around.
So that comes into the discussion about chairs versus pews. And that's in this that came up, and the email that came up at every single Smaller Gathering, why can't we keep our pews? Our pews are too long. And of course, as Jim just said, once we start getting into things, then here they come and they're going to find out where we're not up to code. And you can't get a wheelchair down those side aisles, they're 29 and a half inches wide. They are supposed to be, by code, a minimum of 36 inches. So, can't keep the pews anyway, then it becomes an issue of if you want to change to chairs, which we've been talking about, why chairs are so important, and the flexibility that they allow. And remember, the chairs that we're looking at, that vendor, and I think, can I pass these around? Right, please. This is the company that makes the chairs. And I hope all of you have had an opportunity to try out the chairs. The vendor made two samples for us at no cost to us for us to check them out. Um, Mark ordered it in an oak stain that matches our current pews. And we gave him a choice of arms, no arms, upholstered seat, upholstered back. Consensus seems to be the most comfortable, is upholstered seat and upholstered back. And as I think you all know, you can also order them as benches, so we can, we can, we have a lot of flexibility in how we do our rows. So for young families that want benches, you know how the kids kind of spread out or they get all split, or sometimes? I don't think they're little kids.
I walk here every week.
But we can do benches, we can do rows that have all arms. You know, as we age, we need those arms to get up and get out of that chair before it feels serious, we sit. We can do some that have no arms. So we have a lot of flexibility with these. And the other thing, as that pamphlet is cast around, we can put a side panel on the end of each row on that chair. So it really looks, it looks up here from the back when you enter. You can have a side panel, and that's where we can attach the candle holders, you know, the idle candles that we use for many high, first C-stationary, newer style, but that is of course. So we can still keep that, and we can do it that way, but it really looks up here, so we have that side panel. Okay, are there any questions that we have asked about the sanctuary or concerns? Now's the time. No. All right, I'm going to repeat what our God has said.
The monitors.
Done, all right. That was, you had said at a Smaller Gathering, if we should raise the monitors because they feel too loud right now to see and hear them.
Yeah, we most certainly can. I think that, you know, when we go through the final design process, everything is, you know, open for rebrick review. Yeah?
I said I'm short, right? Thanks, Tom.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't think you can, can we get them any larger? Can we do one?
I think you've got a little ability to increase the size of the monitors, which also helps. Because we've got a generous amount of space. You kind of sit in front of Daniel.
The other thing I just mentioned, I think, we keep the beams, we keep them in the ceiling, we get cleaned up. Um, but we keep all of them. It will all be carpet tiles throughout, that doesn't necessarily show the color.
Yes, it's an implied look.
That's the implied look, I'm remembering. But the carpeting will be all the same throughout the north ex, going into the chapel, and then coming in throughout the sanctuary in the carpet tiles. So if there's a stain or a problem, we can bring them in easily. Yeah. Just like mom. The other thing we did mention, the metalwork, so the eternal flame, the metalwork you see in the railing, and then you'll see other examples of metalwork. That's all going to be done by a local sculptor by the name of Matthew Pasha. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Matt is a local resource and extremely talented fellow. He is a sculptor as well as a metal fabricer. And I've been working with him on the community rails, any railing that we have around the sanctuary. And he will also be fabricating the beautiful modifications for the eternal flame. Uh, so, we have a wonderful resource in town that we don't have to go halfway across the country.
And Matt, I'm sure all of you have seen the children holding the umbrellas at Children's Hospital. He's responsible for that, so that's the artist who will be looking at it.
Yes.
Okay, again, any questions on the sanctuary? Concerns? Do you love it? All right. All right, so we go to the baptismal font, living waters. Okay. Again, I know all of you who posted, have seen the presentation, but the living water font will be relocated right directly in front of where the double doors are in the center of the sanctuary today. We are proposing to remove that wall and windows, so the three sets of doors and wall and the windows will all be opened. The font will sit on tile floor, the beams here, the ceiling tiles go away. And Mark has drawn a beautiful ceiling. Do you want to give a little teachy on that?
Yes, so the ceiling will be above the baptismal font, will be a slightly raised ceiling. It would have indirect lighting, kind of that halo effect above the font. So just going to give, you know, a special transition zone as we enter into the sanctuary itself. And as you can see, a little bit more detailed with Pastor Chris holding the larger version. What I'm hoping shows that, as you would see it from the, um... North ex, thank you, my friend, just went ahead.
And the carpet won't be green.
Yes.
Mark doesn't bring your house up. We'll find an artist to design the font.
Yeah.
Thank you to Kevin, have someone running?
Yes.
Questions? Concerns? Oh, no. It's not like an auction.
First of all, I kept my hands below my waist most of the time. Otherwise, the auction here was like... You grew up with a concern on my voice.
Do you want, all right, let's address the concern about noise. That's come up at every Smaller Gathering because we're talking about completely opening the sanctuary and the north ex. There is a product, sliding glass doors.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, during this design process, we had talked about, as opposed to having a truly open transition between the north ex and the sanctuary, what if we introduce sliding glass doors? Kind of like big scale patio doors. And Kevin Straley, the lead architect, his comment was, he's found that he's done that for other congregations, and they never use them. And it's a hundred thousand dollar investment for the doors. So it becomes, do we invest the money for the doors or not? And I think it's best to plan for worst case scenario structurally, but not to put them in initially.
So that means we can, if we get this in and we find that, well, we do need them, they aren't really just that noisy, then we can still add a layer. But why spend a hundred thousand dollars upfront if we don't need it? So that's the thinking on that. Any other questions, concerns? Okay.
Well, there's Karen.
Well, I'm still concerned because how can you have, you're wanting to open it to meetings, and so you won't be able to have a meeting in the back as well as in the sanctuary because of noise factor.
Like in the north ex?
Yes.
How many times does that happen?
Well, probably not many, but we're opening our church up... Well, probably not many, but we're opening our church up to the unity. We, we want to use it to be beneficial.
I think during, during worship, during, during worship, the only one I hear out there is Donna Walton. I, as, as the preacher, you know, I live in kind of the land that's on the opposite end of the sanctuary. And I don't, I don't have the opportunity to really hear a lot of noise that's out in, out in the north ex. In fact, I prefer that it's open so I can see what's, what's happening out there as a leading worship. I really do enjoy that. I like to see what's going on out there. But I'm not sitting in the back, so I'm not, is there a, who's our best Lutheran here that sits in the back row? Who might, might have a comment about that? That might have experienced some, some noise leading into the sanctuary. Is there anybody that has experienced that? I largely don't think that that's going to be an issue just because we set up before worship, we're out there afterwards. There's not really a lot of opportunities for there to be a meeting if it's, you know, simultaneously with worship happening. But I don't know if you might understand your question.
If it isn't simultaneous, and there's a meeting in, in the back, in the north ex, what's to prevent them from going into the altar area and disturbing?
Into the altar area?
I come to a meeting, I'm there tonight talking on, and the group, the DBSA group is just very grateful that we even opened our doors. They're expanding. I don't, they're very respectful. Everything is for the back. I don't, I don't have a concern whatsoever. They're not going to go up into the worship area and disturb anything. We'll just go into the areas that are designated for us, which most of the whole floor actually is. We break up the small groups, just go into whatever areas that we were allowed to. So I'm not concerned with that at all.
All of our outside groups are very respectful. They need to wait. We don't even know that you guys are here.
The sanctuary's not locked anyway.
Yeah.
No, they're walking there right now, but wanted to know who was in there, so.
I'm just trying to think during a funeral or a wedding, if there's any issues. You know, we meet, we meet with the family in the chapel, so that's, that's working off. There might be some other folks that are coming in from the front doors, but that ceiling right there is low enough. And I think we addressed this the other night with, with Mark is, he can tell you all about the pull points that the acoustical engineers do, but they will actually use a computer program to model our space.
Yes, so the beauty of this day and age, with all the technology available to us, the acoustical engineer and the lighting engineer will, so to speak, model the space. And what that means is they will program in the space for both sound as well as for lighting. And what they will do as an example is they can pinpoint the sound in a specific portion of the sanctuary or the north ex area, depending on what is going on. And in the planning process, we will find out if there is, you know, a potential problem, which will say maybe we need to have some separation. But they are also in charge of providing all the guidance to get the proper balance, you know, for all the acoustics. So there's kind of a fine dance here that we're doing. The other thing that they will do is the lighting program. They will also model it for different times of year, different times of the day to understand light between summer, winter, whatever, early service, late service, what have you, so that we can do a better job of, you know, doing our lighting design. So I've got a lot of confidence that we're not going to end up with a situation where moving day and all of a sudden you find out that, and I say this kind of tongue in cheek, you can hear the toilets down the hall. That's what we want to avoid. And there's a lot of good acoustical material between our ceilings as well as wall materials that help absorb some sound. So we can look at all those things. Myself, Pastor Sarah. Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to the kitchenette unless anyone has any other questions about the living waters font.